Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to my regularly scheduled meeting. This is the secret of the board of commissioners, August 9, 2022. We'll open with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Cynthia Ward, followed by the invocation led by Commissioner Tinsley. Please join us.
Let's thank you, Mayor.
With allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most questions, Heavenly Father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guidance on performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions bear in just your best interest, everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us down as a team to work with the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Thank you. Would I have everybody join us tonight? Thank you for being here. We start off by approving the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? My Mrs. Ward, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. First item under presentation and delegations, recognize Tracy Pryor, administrative coordinator, as July 2022 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient, planning and development director of Chad, check his address. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So this is a huge honor and a distinct pleasure. I love doing this. I love talking about my teammates that I have. I have amazing folks that work with me. I, hands down, am probably the best team that's in the city. And so tonight, I'm very fortunate to recognize one of those teammates that we have. So Tracy has worked for the City Griffin as of August 2nd for 29 years. So and Tracy has worked with us in a number of different capacities. I think she started out in customer service and then moved on as a permit technician and has been with us as an administrative coordinator for some time now. So Tracy has always done a fantastic job with us, but and one of the things that has kind of been interesting, she's been there, you know, long enough, she's been through numerous directors and numerous changeover and staffing and things of that nature and then processes kind of change and also it can get a little frustrating and all that, you know, having to kind of learn new things and all that. And so we have done that over the last year. Again, working with a lot of the teammates that we have up there, we've changed a few things and Tracy has jumped in and has been a fantastic teammate and has really kind of taken to, especially over the last four or five months, she's really helped out developing new forms. She's taken a bigger role in the certificate of appropriateness for the Historic Preservation Committee and really kind of runs that essentially on her own. She's just doing a wonderful job. And so it's just, it's a huge pleasure for me to be able to nominate her and for Strongest Link for July. And so I'm very, very happy that she was selected for this and it couldn't, I just, I'm very excited for her. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Tracy, thank you so much for your service in the city. I know you've always wanted to go back to customer service. It's so interesting, you wanted to serve in that capacity. So if you ever miss it, we will be glad to figure it out for you.
I see where you're at the airport.
Thank you, Chad, for nominating you today. Moving into another sad recognition here is Danny Pryor, water distributor, distribution wastewater collection superintendent with the City Griffin, and is retiring on August 16, 2022. Mr. Pryor has served the City of Griffin for 33 years, director of watershed management, Brandon Lewis, address. So come on up. And I'm glad I got to see Danny last Sunday after, was it Sunday afternoon? Out there on Mahogany Road with this crew, doing one of his last major water line flows. So you're such a blessing.
It's not over yet.
Brandon, would you like to?
Yeah, so for three, a little over three years now, I've worked with Danny. Danny is a 33 and a half years, I guess, and counting with the City of Griffin. It's rare to come across someone with that kind of tenure in any organization anymore. And but Danny's knowledge of the system is, commitment to this community is evident, not only by that, but just by what he does each and every day. He's got a tough job. He really does. And when I got here, you know, already kind of knew that the position that Danny holds is, in my opinion, the busiest position in the City of Griffin, maybe not always every day, but sometimes the phone never stops ringing. And sometimes he doesn't go home, you know, in 24-hour period. So I've learned a lot from observing Danny's leadership here. I know his team has been, you know, all better for his guidance and leadership, his development. He's going to, when he vacates his position on the 16th, he's going to leave a, he's going to create a vacuum. And his team is going to be ready to fill that. And I think he's given them the tools and what they need to be successful so that we don't miss a beat. But just in case everything falls apart, Danny's not going too far away. So I already know his new cellphone number, he doesn't have yet, so.
Danny, would you like to say anything?
I wouldn't miss a word. It's been a good ride. I appreciate what Steve has done for me. But it's time to, time to move across.
God bless you, sir. God bless you.
Melinda.
Was your wife here?
Yes, she is.
Would you like to introduce?
Everybody knows Melinda.
Well, this is my wife, Melinda. This is, I'm looking forward to meet you.
That's the truth. Ready? Brandon, one. All right, got it.
Next item is to present a joint proclamation by Spalding County City Griffin welcoming Griffin Spalding County students back to school. I believe we have Mr. Pugh and Dr. Simmons here, so we can come up, follow along with our county manager as well.
Welcome, sir. It's so good to see you. The Superior Spalding Day.
There you go. Got to get that right, William Wilson. So Griffin plus Spalding County, joint proclamation, welcoming students back to school, whereas the Griffin Spalding County schools are preparing to begin the 2022 and 23 school year on August 3, 2022. Whereas the social interaction is critical for pre-adolescents and adolescents, as studies show that students who miss in-person school time fall behind in learning. And whereas these Griffin Spalding County teachers play a vital role in shaping the lives of the children in this community, reach more than science, math, and language, they teach our children how to live. And whereas, as COVID brought many unique challenges, Griffin Spalding County teachers work diligently to overcome those obstacles and continue their duty, dedication to educating our students. And whereas, the outpouring of support from local organizations and individuals to help prepare children for the start of this school year is remarkable and commendable. And whereas the African proverb states, "It takes a village to raise a child," and this philosophy is alive in the Griffin Spalding County community with partners who stand together to offer assistance and the dedicated teachers and staff ready to welcome students back for another productive school year. Now therefore be resolved, we, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners and the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, express our gratitude to the Griffin Spalding County Schools. We are honored to have these positive role models and mentors in our students' lives. We ask the Griffin Spalding County citizens to help welcome back our students as they begin the 2022 and 23 school year, and thank the teachers, administration, and support staff who work every day to ensure the students are well-educated and safe. Signed, Clay Davis, Chairman of Spalding County, and Dr. Steve Ledbetter, County Manager, and Mayor Douglas S. Holbert, and City Manager Jessica W. O'Connor. So we'd like to present this to y'all. And thank you very much. Do you have any words you'd like to say before we get a picture?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of our Board of Education, 1,400 or so employees and 10,000 students that we serve, do know that we appreciate your support. We appreciate the enthusiasm and your presence on the first day of school was phenomenal. The love that was shown to our students and families phenomenal. Keep it up. As I've said all year long, we're going together. We'll only go as far as we go together. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for your leadership and your service.
Thanks.
I want to add just one quick thing. We made a new hire, I guess it was last week, Chief Donald Britt from West Point. Limo, as it is known, that Chief Britt was actually the first school resource officer ever in the state of Georgia. It started right here in Griffin with our police department and Chief Donald Britt going to Griffin High School as school resource officer. So to see him back with what went on throughout the country, mainly evolved in Texas, to have a chief of police onboard with our school system adds to that level of safety that we seek for our children here in our community. So thank you guys for making it higher and I think it'll be a positive result here in our community.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. You all come together. Good picture.
Oh, I know. Jeffrey, come forward. Sing to me all together.
I was standing next to her. I didn't want to sit down.
Rodney has to sit down because he's so tall. Everybody looking good together?
Yep. Cynthia, you there? Okay, ready? One, two. All right, got it.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. See you tomorrow. Appreciate you. This is more. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, tonight, our final item under presentations and delegations is review financial reports for June 2022. The County Director Amanda Carmichael, address.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We are presenting the June 2022 financials that covers over the past 12 years, 12 months. The total operating revenue for the end of the fiscal year was 100.23%, with property taxes collected at 103%, totaling 4.1 million. However, our TAVT has dropped to 96% collection, which is 701,000. The total operating expense for the fiscal year is 92.46%. I would like to point out the capital for machinery equipment was only at 63.49%. And that's due to our global chip shortage or our supply chain crisis. So the global chip shortage affected the buying machinery, automobiles, electronics. Please be aware that you will probably see an increase in rollovers into the FY23 budget for the shortage of the capital that wasn't bought in the FY22 budget. The total salaries and benefits were at 96%. Lost collections were at 110. Our lost collections were at 114. And our T's lost collections are at 94.86%. So doing pretty good. Do, does anyone have any questions?
What is the TAVT? What is that?
That's the motor vehicle. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Carmichael.
Thank you.
Moving into citizens' comment. At this time, the mayor opens support to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or determined in the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not at form for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters to main city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come before the board? Anybody on my left side? Anybody on my right side who'd like to come before the board? Okay. Moving into consent agenda, we have items five through 12. We have a motion to take consent agenda as a whole. Mr. Tinsley with a motion, second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Moving into the regular agenda, item 13 is consider minutes of the City Griffin Board of Commissioners called workshop meeting on June 9, 2022. Commissioner McCord and Murray were absent. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Tinsley, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. That'd be a four, zero, two, two extensions of McCord and Murray. And item 14 is consider the minutes of the City Griffin Board of Commissioners regular meeting on July 26, 22. Commissioner McCord was absent. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Murray with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero, one, the Commissioner McCord abstaining. Item 15, consider the minutes of the City Griffin Board of Commissioners called meeting with the Spalding County Water and Sewage and Facilities Authority on July 27, 22. Commissioner Brock, Murray, and Tinsley were absent. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. McCord with a motion, Mr. Ward with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Four, zero, two, with Murray and Tinsley abstaining. Item 16 is consider a resolution naming Amanda Carmichael, Director of Accounting, as designated officer authorized to request sales tax information from the Department of Revenue and Resolving to request all vendor sales tax information described in OCGA 48-2-15-D. D dot one for the City Griffin from the period beginning July 1, 2021 through December 2031, 22.
Question real quick.
Okay. Can we get a motion first? Do we have a motion approved? Ms. Flowers with a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Murray. Go ahead, Mrs. Flowers.
Where this says particular period, is the standard period, a year and a half, or?
So you actually have to submit this resolution anytime you request this document. So we were covering our basis going back for at least a year. This should also last for the next six months and more than likely anytime we would request these in the future, even if we are still designating Ms. Carmichael as the designated officer, we would have to add that new period in. So this is really just covering our basis for the remainder of the year.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? With the motion from Flowers, second by Ms. Murray in favor of the resolution, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 17 is consider a resolution per Section 2190 emergency procurement of the Griffin Code of Ordinance to ratify the purchase of a Caterpillar wheel loader in the amount of $213,552 from Yanty Brothers Sourcewell contract. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Mrs. Murray with a motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Ward with a second. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 18 is consider the purchase of the 2022 Western Star 4900 dump truck in the amount of $241,160 from JW Truck Sales, single source, and amend the budget accordingly. Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Murray with a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Ward. Go ahead with your question, Mrs.
Are you saying amend the budget to accordingly? Is this something that is not budgeted?
It was budgeted. It's just that it came in a little over budget. So we're having to amend the budget and it's really a GMA lease for three different items, all of which are public works equipment, one of which you've already approved, and the second one you just did for the Caterpillar wheel loader, and the third one is the dump truck. Out of the combined of those three, we ended up about $6,000 short. So we're remanding the budget to cover that $6,000. And we just put it on the last one because that's the one that I guess falls short if you purchase it last.
Any other questions? We have a motion from Ms. Murray, second by Ms. Ward for the purchase. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 19 is consider approval of the form Cemetery Burial Rights Contract for Purpose of Conveying Burial Rights to the City's Perpetual Care Cemetery to various purchasers and consider resolution authorizing the execution of all cemetery burial rights contracts taking this form to create a binding contract conveying burial rights to the purchaser. Do we have a motion to approve?
Is this something, do we do this? No, we actually several, my understanding is several decades ago, changed the type of contract for our cemetery to where we're conveying burial rights rather than actually conveying a plot. This contract really just lays out what the responsibilities are of the city and what the expectations are of the purchaser of that, of those burial rights, specifically notifying us if they have a change in the person they want to designate and overall just letting things up legally. The addition to this, though, is also the resolution where we're basically getting you guys to approve this contract as the form going forward so that we don't have to bring each individual contract back to you every time.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Murray with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Tinsley with a second. Any other questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 20 is consent, considering amending the master service agreement with Lenslock E for the addition of 49 in-car depth camera, which includes setup, installation, and maintenance with a recurring cost of $74,061 each year. This will bring the total cost of the contract, including in-car camera and bodyboard camera, to $132,991 per year for five years. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. McCord with a second. All in favor of amending the master service agreement, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 21 is consider revisions to the Main Street Program Board's bylaws and procedures. Economic Development Director Jeremy Stratt is here to address the questions. Do we have a motion to consider revisions to the Main Street Board's program bylaws? Mrs. Murray with a motion, second by Mr. McCord. Any questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item 22 is considers service agreement with weekly cleaning for comprehensive cleaning services of historic city hall on a biweekly basis in the amount, total amount of $9,346.15 for the year, 26 services, including initial service at a rate of $692.40, $40, and 25 routine biweekly services at a rate of $346.15 per service. Do we have a motion to approve this service? Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Mrs. Ward with a second and a question by Commissioner Flowers.
Cleaning expenses into a fee that will be charged to persons or groups when cleaning services are needed, like if they're not needed?
So the additional quote that is on there, the post-event cleaning, well, actually, that may be, is that what you're referencing?
I'm looking on, I'm just on the cover sheet for that, but I'm just wondering, I assume that it would, the fees would be passed along. Oh, I see this post-event quote. I'm just wondering, because the cover sheet says as needed or something like that, like how that's going to be determined?
So sometimes we have HCHs written out to our various authorities or sometimes departments. If it's a small enough event, that's not something that we would necessarily need a cleaning fee for if you're just using the conference room. But that event cost for the cleaning, that would be determined by the city manager and the Director for Economic Development when contract for the event is entered into. If it's needed, then it's made a part of that rental cost. If it's not needed, then it's something we don't assess and we don't schedule to take place.
So it's kind of arbitrary?
The post-event cleaning?
Or how the specific event gets designated, whether or not it's, so I hear you saying, like if it's a meeting and it's eight people in the conference room, it likely doesn't need to be cleaned. But then how do we distinguish between 25 people cramming into the conference room and trashing it versus 50 people going into the larger room, but maybe they didn't trash it? So I'm wondering, like, that seems a little arbitrary, or is there some clear language about what the parameters are for who gets charged for cleaning?
So this is just the contract for the cleaning company itself, for them to provide us with that quote, but we will actually, we're currently working on three different contracts that you all will approve as to form for HCH rental. One of them is a meeting contract, one of them is an event contract, and one is a no-cost contract for our standard rentals, such as for departments. A good example would be Dr. Keller's retirement party. That would be something that the departments would, would have to pay for, the cleaning costs after that event. The no-cost contracts will be entirely at the city manager's discretion. That's generally how that's been set up in the past. But I wouldn't say that it's an arbitrary note in there because we are putting a line on it that says that if it does get trashed, it will be taken out of any damage deposit we collected. And if it's a no-cost meeting that they signed up for, they would lose the ability to rent that at no cost for the future.
Okay, so what I, what I hear you saying is that there will be language coming before us in the future that isn't made, and I only say that because I see where there's a potential for that to be unfair or improper because my cousin wanted to rent it and they didn't get charged for cleaning up, but then we charged someone else who had a very similar size group. So as long as that concern is noted for me, that I would like to make sure that we do see that language, that how for parameters, then I'm going to proceed.
We'll keep that in mind with the HCH contract. It's almost, we're just waiting on a couple more forms to be attached.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution from Mr. Tinsley, second by Commissioner Ward. Any other questions? All in favor of the service agreement, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. And then the final item on the agenda is Commissioner to appoint one member of the Griffin Main Street Board to fill the unexpired term of John Joyner, who resigned from his appointment effective June 21, 22. This is a business property owner appointment with term expiring 12/31/24. We've got two names that have been submitted, Ms. Ashley Martin and Shana McCormick. Do we have, I'm opening the floor for nominations? Any nominations? I'd like to nominate Shana McCormick. Any other nominations?
I'm going to be closed nominating.
We have a motion to close nominations. Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner McCord. All in favor of closing nominations, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. All right, moving into city managers' report.
All right, very briefly, our archway mini-retreat is tomorrow from 2:00 to 5:00 at the County Extension. I did send you an email earlier this week that had a couple of attachments in regards to things that we will discuss tomorrow, such as the community school and mental health. And so if you'll take it, it goes before 2:00 tomorrow at the County Extension office, next to where we vote, not the senior center. Also, just wanted to give you a heads up that Dr. Ledbetter and I met with our GDOT representatives, a lot of different engineers who have been in constant contact lately with the railroad. They are looking at finally completely correcting those crossings at Green Valley and Gate Bridge. Unfortunately, it will require a closure of State Route 16. There is no way to do it otherwise. From what I understand, about seven or eight years ago, when they did it the first time, they had to completely close 16. They're looking at having to close it for at least a week. They are wanting to do it the week of fall break, so that's October 10. They asked that we go ahead and put it out there as soon as we could, so this is the first time I've seen you publicly. So there is your first notice. GDOT is working on a press release with an official alternative detour route. I have asked that they use 20 and not 155 for obvious reasons, so I hope that they will do that. I think they said it's about six miles more if you actually go 20, and that's if you did a round trip, so just three miles more if you were just going one way. Really am pushing that they not use 155 and come right through downtown. Just to end on a good note, congratulations to both Danny and Tracy Pryor, although not related, but same last name. It's always an exciting thing to be able to recognize an employee for service while they're still here, and then also to recognize someone for what they've done for the city for 33 and a half years. I just wanted to publicly thank them for what they do every day. And I think there's a couple of you I did not catch before the meeting. I need to talk with you all just very briefly afterwards in regards to an employee health update.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
No comments today. Drew is also on.
Anything, Drew? Hi.
I have no comments.
Thank you, Drew. Commissioner Murray?
I did what Jessica or city manager Jessica Fox says about employees and everything. Congratulations. I'm gonna miss Danny. He taught me so much through the years and I know that our staff now continue his legacy, but gonna miss him. And congratulations Tracy and to Amanda as well. Very fortunate, thank you staff for keeping us thriving as a city. Regarding the proclamation for welcoming the city and Spalding County students back to school, I just want to congratulate the Class of 2023 seniors and also thank our teachers and hope that they all have a very healthy and safe year for the coming.
Commissioner Flowers?
No comment.
Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Tinsley?
Nothing yet.
Commissioner McCord? Thank you all for being here tonight. Y'all got a letter, copy of it. That was from Senator, going to Senator Ossoff's office and his administrator Boz. This is one of the functions of the I-75 Central Order Coalition, working to deal with these regional issues. They will actually, I-75 Central Order Coalition will actually be here tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at Central Historic City Hall. And the items are going to be brought to the table, those updates on the potential of intercity rail from Nashville to Savannah, as well as an update on the Bucks County development at Georgia 16. And then Randy Peters will be giving a brief update on the airport solicits and support from folks in the region. So that'll be tomorrow. Our last summer concert series event is this Saturday night. The band, Them, will be playing from 7 to 9. So it's been a good summer concert series. We've been averaging 100 plus or minus every week. If you haven't had a chance to join us for that event, 7 and 9 o'clock this week at the Parkin's. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner Murray with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCord? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.